Lyte Khu, thank you very much for being here today. I think since you are one of two incumbents running in this race, the right place to start is to ask you for your impressions and perceptions as to how you've made a difference on this council over the last four years and your assessment of how the council as a whole has functioned and worked together.
The last three years and nine months have certainly been a journey. I have to say that I've learned a lot, the inner workings of city government. And what I've also experienced and have been very appreciative of is the community that we live in, the many, many residents who are so well-informed and who have been instrumental in helping me with research. As you know, we as council members don't have staff, and so the residents are the ones who have actually come forward and helped me with research, with preparations, giving me pros and cons in order to make the right decisions when it comes to many of the issues that come to council. Of course, you know, with everything, there is the underlying principles and standard that one has in terms of ethics and integrity, what they stand for, and a lot of that is on my website. What I believe I've contributed through these last three years and nine months is mostly to be open to hearing residents, their issues, ensuring that we continue with the lifestyles that they've invested in, in the many years that they've lived here. And for many of the new people who have moved in, you know, obviously, they moved here because of what they have learned about the lifestyle here. And hopefully also recognizing, you know, the cost of living continues to increase. And we have to recognize how to be balanced in some of the actions that we take as council members, as elected officials, as folks who set policies. In addition to that, recognizing that there is a safe parking issue, what I was calling at the time was RV living, you know, RV dwellers. And since then, we, the vice mayor, Tom DuBois, and myself, we had drafted a colleagues memo, which we discussed last night, in order to address that. It was a very slow and long process, but we are very delighted that last night we were able to approve an interim ordinance in order for the county to lease land and to operate the program. And it's all thanks to Supervisor Semidion for guiding me when I had a conversation with him to see if we can find a place and then he would come and bring forward the rest. But also, I think a big part of it is watching state and regional mandates. There's been a lot of that ever since I joined council. And every year, we seem to be dealing with more and more of these state mandates that state legislation or proposed state legislation that comes forth to try to take away municipal, local cities and their controls over land use and zoning. And I really believe land use and zoning belongs to individual cities because at the end of the day, we're the ones who live here and who knows what is essential and what is not. Along with a lot of these state and regional legislation or proposed bills, it doesn't take into consideration all of the cumulative impacts that takes place in the locality. There's the costs. They don't think about that. So I think that's a big part.
We'll get to some of the details of the things that you're addressing now, but before we move on, I'd just like you to share the biggest disappointments that you've had over these last four years, where you have felt that the council did not achieve what you were hoping it would achieve.
Really representing, I think the disappointments is really representing what they say. Words, there's a lot of words in city documents and what many of the council members says, but the action is not there. I would give example, most recent was the President Hotel. Well, it wasn't really recent. It's about two years now, right? President Hotel, we want housing. President Hotel was 75 units of housing, and I can't even, I don't know how many persons were living there. Yet, there was so much behind-the-scenes work in order to ensure that codes were changed in order to accommodate the change of the use. And in doing that, we have displaced numerous number of people.
As a council member, you have stood out for wanting slower growth, a moderate growth, so it's commensurate with infrastructure and maintaining quality of life and such. I'm wondering, the RENA allocation currently, you said that that seems to be appropriate, but the next RENA allocation is twice as much in estimation. And the city hasn't even kept up with the 300 units a year. So are you satisfied with how slow the growth is moving at this point? Or do you feel like there needs to be greater efforts made to bring in more housing, to create more housing, to sustain more housing?
Yes, it has to be a conscious effort of what we want here in Palo Alto. You know, with the RENA numbers that is previous, that was about 2,200, and we haven't come close to that. On the market rate side, we are upping it. But then on the below-market rates, that's where the problem is. But I also see a lot of the developers, in a way, they're kind of holding back and gaming the system, looking at, to see what Sacramento is going to come up with next. If every year, there's these bills that is going to come forward to usurp local land use and zoning, why would the developers want to do anything immediately? They're waiting for what other open doors is going to come forward in order for them to maximize. At this point, I will say the housing units that are proposed for the site at San Antonio, where the formerly community gym was, where it was Studio Kicks, it was, that has huge concerns for me because it keeps on using all these laws that is not even, that is being proposed. And there's hopes to see what other laws will be proposed in order to have developers be the ones who dictate what kind of development, how many units, how high, what kind of parking, what kind of open space. And the whole time, the city has not done an evaluation or analysis to even see how many empty units do we have in Palo Alto? How many are Airbnbs? So what is our housing in Palo Alto like? We don't really know. We don't really know. And now in our COVID state, for the RENA, for A-BAG and MTC to be moving forward with their draft Plan Area 2050-ASs and their methodology in calculating housing numbers is wrong. They need to reset and look at what we're dealing with right now when there is a mass exodus leaving, people leaving their homes, going out of state, other places, when they're looking for more space in every way. More space, interior for work, for learning, for play. And you know, I think that Palo Alto is lucky that our predecessors, leaders have thought about all the open spaces we have because obviously, those are being used and appreciated greatly. I really think A-BAG, regional, regional needs to kind of take a revisit at what they're doing. And to say that about affordable housing and how do we go about bringing more of that is to be purposeful. If we want BMR, below-market rate housing, we need to reset what does affordable mean in our code. Affordable right now is 120% area median income. We need to reset it to below 80%. Our definition in Palo Alto needs to be below 80% AMI in order to encourage the building of below 80% AMI.
I think the main criticism of that, though, is that the lower you go, the more expensive it is to build, the greater the subsidy has to be for developers. So what do you do to ensure that by focusing exclusively on BMR, particularly for low and very low-income individuals, you don't end up with a situation where there's no housing at all being produced because of the challenges of building affordable housing?
Well, at this point, building market-rate housing is not a problem. All the developers are going to go for that. In fact, you know, VTA, the VTA site, you know, they're building at only 120% AMI, and that's an issue. We, it's, below 80 AMI is very highly subsidized, yes, and most of the time, it is through government funds. And you know, we are going to have to explore how to fund that ourselves, if that's what we want, or to find partners, public-private partnerships. But at the end of the day, you know, I see a lot of that coming from government. And previously, I had worked and supported the business tax, and I would still support that in terms, and in the past, I had wanted to put a huge percentage towards transportation. But with what is, if BMR is what we're looking for with the community, then we're going to want to allocate more percentage towards affordable housing. So that is one way of putting together a plan for below-rate market housing in order to address the affordability issue.
Before we leave housing, I'm not clear on where, on how you would ensure that housing of the type you're describing was built and where it should be built, and what actions the council should take to ensure that that's the housing built on those areas. So if you could identify where in the community you think this new housing should occur, and what actions the council needs to take to bring that about?
Obviously, there is, most of the properties in Palo Alto is owned by individual private property owners. So we can designate places like what we have done under the housing plan. But there's a, I would say that we want to be careful about how it's, it doesn't, I would want to see that the codes also does not, how do you say, encroach into the single-family or lower-density neighborhoods where it is a, the height, the daylight plane, the transitional that we have in the code. I think we need to be, I believe that we need to be more forceful and take that consideration deeply. So I think that, you know, along the El Camino or the San Antonio, those are places that could potentially have the affordable housing units. And then also, there is a few city sites. Say, for example, the parking lot that was in downtown that is across from the main post office. That could be another potential site for affordable housing that the city could help with because land values obviously is one of the factors that causes, that makes it harder to build affordable housing. I would also.
What about the 50-foot height limit? Would you be prepared to, in those areas that you're describing, going above 50 feet so that you can lower the cost of these units?
No, I'm not ready to go to that. I'm not ready to go to that. I don't believe that it's for me to decide on the 50-foot height, 50-foot height limit or the 55-foot height limit. It's something that I think the people of Palo Alto should decide. It is something that has been decided prior to me coming onto council, and it seems to be a very take-to-hard topic, and I want to honor that. So I'm not ready to say here that I'm willing to or not willing to increase the height limit.
So would you support putting that on the ballot?
I would.
What about returning to planned community zoning or planned housing, as it's now being rebranded? I know the council is going to be speaking about it soon, but as you know, it's been on hiatus since the Maybach Project, 2013. Would you support bringing back that zoning designation to allow kind of these negotiations over zoning concessions?
I do, I do, I do support bringing back planned community zoning, but not in the manner that is introduced now. Not to say that planned zoning, planned community zoning, there is the benefit factor that I have a big issue with. I think that the benefit, public benefit factor needs to benefit the entire community. So, so things like just because it's affordable should be considered as a public benefit. I don't, I don't quite, I don't quite understand that, and I don't see how that is. A park that is within the community or on the rooftop, I don't see how that benefits the public either. Less parking on the site, I don't see how that benefits the public either. So I think, you know, the public community, the planned community zoning, certainly, I think it should come back, especially for affordable housing, but it shouldn't be a public benefit because it's affordable housing.
So housing is not inherently a public benefit, in your view?
No.
What would it look like, then, a PC zone?
You know, consideration, you know, same thing. I would, I would like to, well, what I would personally, I can't speak for other people. But it would be, it would be about respecting the dignity of people who are living in subsidized housing. It's not walls all around them, and then have a little green patch. I think it has to be, you know, it could, I don't see it as five stories or eight stories simply because of the wall that I see around it. I see it as more two or three stories with a lot of light and not windows that open towards El Camino. So when it's hot and they have to open their windows, it's breathing carbon monoxide. And I'd like to see a lot of open space with trees, somewhat park-like. And you know, their balconies, I would hope that it would be a little bit larger than some of the balconies that I see approved nowadays. More private space for each individual, especially now that we know with the pandemic and COVID that we do need that space. Mainly, I'd like to see planned communities done with dignity.
Yeah, it sounds like a lower-density, well-designed experience. Okay.
Would you support them having a commercial component to subsidize the costs of creating such a community? If the price for this kind of vision was allowing offices to pay for the cost, would you support that?
I would prefer, I would prefer some type of, some type of retail, but if it's personal services that is catering also to the people who live in that development, that is not, for example, personal services for offices, I think that might be something that I can, I can consider. I'm not saying that I am okay with, I can consider. So uses is going to be, it has to be a community-serving use.
Okay, the city, like many cities, is in a financial bind right now. We've got the pension obligations, some major capital projects. Community services are being cut. What do you think the right financial mix is in order to fulfill all of our obligations? What's the most important thing?
I, I believe that, you know, we could have, I believe that we could have deferred a lot of our capital improvement projects that are not urgent and that does not have to be addressed at this time when we have such a crisis on our hands. We've supported the businesses here locally who have been hit very hard. And it's the right thing to do. But then we also have the resident part of it where we need to kind of pay, we need to pay attention, not just kind of. We need to pay attention. In the hottest times of the, we've experienced a few heat waves recently. And, you know, people, we have to address ensuring that the elderly are not, you know, stuck at home in the heat. So I'm happy to see that we did have the cooling centers, you know, come on board, but sometimes it hasn't come out soon enough. I am also very happy to see that the city manager had been cognizant of the bad air days, and so the cooling centers had doubled, had shifted to addressing the air quality issues. But also, I think that our services towards the community in, for helping the youth needs to, needs to continue and not just in minimal numbers. There has to be a lot more programs that I think we have to support. Children's theater, youth community services, ensuring that their mental state is well, ensuring that it keeps them meeting up with their friends where they have formed a bond, and ensuring that they are not isolated and that they keep, they keep the bond going and having people to speak with. Yes.
So are you in favor, then, of deferring the police headquarters, fire station? What sort of big projects would you just put on the shelf for now?
Well, we have already deferred Station 4 from moving forward in our last budget discussions. But yes, the safety, safety building has not, has not been deferred. I thought that the bike bridge could have been over the 101, could have been deferred as well. And there are some other projects. Well, the California Avenue Garage is almost finished, so that's not something that I would want to stop in the middle. You know, it would be completely unreasonable. But there are big projects that, which is not necessary for now, that we could defer. I, you know, public safety is another important matter. You know, we have station, fire stations that are completely browned out, which means it's closed during certain days. And I would, I would, I would hope that we don't have a number of incidents that happen all at the same time where we wouldn't be able to respond, or our firefighters won't be able to respond. And you know, we have new firefighters that are being hired. And it's, it's, you know, it's, and we spend a lot of money on each and every one of them. I think that, you know, we really should be revisiting that and making sure that we're able to keep the new recruits, not only in fire, but also in police that are, that we are hiring. So.
One of your priorities, according to your campaign website, is restoring trust and transparency in city government. And you also mentioned in your plan questionnaire that it's the council's and not the city manager's role to set policy, and this seems to have been forgotten lately. What do you, in what areas do you think that has been forgotten? And what are you referring to when you talk about the city losing trust and transparency? And what could be done to regain it? I guess it's a three-part question.
Well, a more firmer council, a council that gives clear instructions to staff members might be the first step. And also, I want to say delineating, you know, what staff is doing. So for example, you know, I really think that, you know, council members go out, speaks to the residents, the community, gets the input. But oftentimes, you know, the city manager and gives recommendations that almost sounds like a policy. And it's not, here's one recommendation, and here's the other option, and here's the other option. You know, I'm not going to say I haven't seen that. I have seen it come before, and it was very, I was very surprised, and it really pleased me. I really liked that. But oftentimes, it's just one recommendation. There's no options there. And I'll give some examples of where I see that, you know, some of the things have not happened in good faith. One of them would be the cover lead design and planning. We went through a series of community meetings. Attendance was tremendous. And, and there was clear instructions from the consultant as to what you're going to be deciding today or tonight. And so each of these meetings is pretty clear, and people worked very hard. I attended, I believe, all of the meetings, but I didn't sit at a table. I moved from table to table to listen to conversations and discussions at the tables. And I really don't remember anybody saying housing. But at the very last meeting, housing was brought up. Where it came from, how it came from, where did it come from? You know, I mean, so, and enough people were upset. Enough community members were upset about this for me to wonder, you know, so if this is how people, if this is how we move forward with making, asking for input, then there's, there's a lack of faith. People don't know what to expect because what they provide as information and all of their discussions and decisions and it's just thrown out the window at the very last moment. And that's not right. That's not right. The other thing is the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan. Yes, we know that there's supposed to be housing in there. And what is the mix, you know, what is the plan? And we have very good planning with the SOFA plan, the South of Forests plan. And yet, they didn't utilize that as one of the ways to go forward in trying to incorporate what had happened during the SOFA plan, which they learned a lot as they moved forward, and had people with institutional knowledge to help out with, or guiding with the North Ventura plan. I, when we had a community meeting, I actually suggested for former mayor's Pat Burt and Karen Holman to participate as people with the background knowledge, but that was not accepted. Now, there's three alternatives, and one of the alternatives is over 1,600 housing units with eight-story buildings and reduced parking because it's going to be walkable neighborhood. And the Venturaans, you know, have, what, they've, they've not accepted this. They're still trying to figure out how does, how are the traffic circulation going to take place? So that's a big concern. The other two would be, sorry, the other two would be the College Terrace Center. The other two would be, sorry, the other two would be uh the College Terrace Center, the grocery store, as well as um the grocery store, as well as Edgewood Market. You know, we have penalties that are still outstanding. And while I understand that there are, um I think College Center might have a lawsuit or suing the city. You know, if we have believe in an ordinance that has been crafted, then we should be proceeding with that. Um and also, uh discussion with the community is needed. Um if there's any other discussions about what could be done at these locations, the discussion needs to be with the community.
Okay, so you're talking specifically about land use issues and development, it sounds like, in all the examples you cited about trust and transparency. But um I wanted to ask you how that translates to the council's recent actions on the city auditor and the police auditor. Are you, are you happy with the way um those services have changed over the past year?
No, I'm not happy. Um I think um I will, I will say that, you know, with the um there's the CAO committee and I apologize, I don't know what it's there's the council-appointed officers, which are the four that is under direct um under council direct. But then there's the committee that is cons- that consists of council members who um do some of the vetting for um for some of these uh decisions such as the hiring of the city manager, um interviews, interviews and the hiring of the auditor. And then als- and I'm not quite sure about the IAP, the
Oh, the IPA, yeah, I I was referring to the the change in the scope of services with Michael Ginaco uh last December.
Right.
To to exclude internal conflicts.
Well, so some of the hirings for our um council-appointed officers, I think should have been a little bit more uh more discussion with the council and with the general public since uh a lot of these positions, it's not just the council hiring them, but it's actually the community has to buy into these individuals as well, right? Um I I still believe and um initially, when the item came up for the auditor to be outsourced, um I still believe that we do, we should have an auditor of within Palo Alto, our very own. Um there, there are many things in speaking with prior uh previous auditors, there's many things that the auditors, in knowing the city, in knowing the community, in walking the halls in City Hall, there's things that they can gather and that they can actually um uh work with the different departments on. Um and having that community engagement part, they get to understand what is some of the importance and what are some of the values to the community. So um I think that should have been more inclusive of the community in that decision.
Um I'm sorry to interrupt you, but our time is up. Unfortunately, we're out of time. So um thank you so much for being here and um good luck to you.
Thank you.